Camera's yours.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for September 23rd, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I just want to remind everyone how to do public comment. There's two opportunities for public comment tonight. First opportunity will be during for agenda items only, and the second one will be at the end of the meeting for any public comment that you'd like to make. If you'd like to make a public comment, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. If it's for an agenda item, please put the title of the agenda item in the subject and your name and address in the body of the email for the record. The same would apply for public comment at the end of the meeting. If you'd like to make a public comment, do the same, although you don't need to put the agenda item obviously in the subject. If we'll recognize you, it might take a couple of seconds for us to turn the microphones on for you so that you can speak. If you choose not to speak and you'd like me to read your comment aloud, I'm happy to do that. Please try to keep it 300 words or less. Send the email again to publiccomment@nhtwp.org and I'll read the comment aloud verbatim either during the agenda item public comment or it's a public comment. So with that, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence and the flags are behind you. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic. Stand. Justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any flag presentation or special presentation tonight, so we're going to go right to public comment for agenda items only. And so far, I have one, and that would be Frank Weckerman. Bill, if you could turn Frank Weckerman's microphone on, he would like to speak. And I'll help Frank along. Frank is 22 Renee Circle. Hello, Frank, can you hear me?
Yes, I just unmuted. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Weckerman. You can just say your name and address again for the record.
It's Frank Weckerman. I'm at 22 Renee Circle in Richborough. Thank you. This is concerning the old Richborough Schoolhouse. It's right behind my home. I did have a meeting with Heath Dumack, and there were a couple of things that I don't think were written, but we spoke about, and he made some promises, so I'd like to perhaps get them included in the agreement. One is that there would be no lighting on the new building when it's once it's constructed on the backside, my side of the building. He also promised that there would be, there are several pine trees behind my home that's actually on township property. And I go and take care of the trees because the vines that then weeds that grow up would just kill the pine trees. He agreed he would take care of that. And the last thing we talked about was the planting of some trees on the hill behind the building prior to construction to perhaps allow some of those trees to mature. So when that building was finally constructed, the trees would also would also provide some blockage, so I wouldn't be able to see the building as well. Those were just the things I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weckerman. And I believe Mr. Dumack is on and listening, so I'll ask him to make sure that he addresses that during his presentation a little later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Very much for your comments. Are there any other comments? Let's see, I think we have one more. Mr. Swickel from Renee Circle, would you like to speak, or would you like me to read your comment? Go ahead and turn your microphone on if you'd like to speak.
May I speak for a moment?
Thanks, Mr. Swickel. If you wouldn't mind, just say your name and address again for the record.
Surely. Murray Swickel, 26 Renee Circle in Richborough.
Thank you.
I too am in the rear of the proposed building addition to the old schoolhouse, and I was with Frank Weckerman at the meeting that we had with Mr. Dumack. I don't want to be redundant, so I'm just going to echo everything that Frank just said. As it was my understanding as well, the only addition that I wish to make is that on the plan, as presently noted, there are no trees going across my property. And in the meeting that we had with Mr. Dumack, he agreed to expand his tree plantings to go to the back of my property as well. And that was the only addition I wanted to make to Frank Weckerman's notes.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Swickel.
Thank you.
Again, I'll ask Mr. Dumack, I believe he is listening, if he can address that the meeting with both you and Mr. Weckerman during his presentation and how he'll accommodate those items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just do one last check for public comment.
That was it so far, Adam.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to consent items, approval of minutes. Frank?
There are no objections. I request that the minutes be approved by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you, Frank. Accounts payable for September 9th and September 23rd. Kim?
Yes, the bills list for September 9th, 2020, total all funds, $586,841 and 1 cent. And the bills list for September 23rd, 2020, total all funds, $985,952 and 11 cents.
Thank you. Any objection? Okay, passed by consent. Thank you, Kim. We have no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business, so we're going to move to new business. And we'll start with the presentation of a Richborough apartment project concept plan. Barry?
Eric, thanks, Adam. I just want to see, is Art Cassini on Zoomer?
Yes, I'm promoting him to a panelist as well as Victor Barr will be joining the conversation.
And then Victor, okay. So for the residents' benefit, the township was approached by Fieldstone Associates, and we have two gentlemen on tonight, Art Cassini and Victor, who are, I guess, principals with Fieldstone Associates. And they're going to be discussing a possible concept plan on some public land that's behind the senior center and the library. So this is the first public meeting on this topic. It's just purely talking about concepts, and this board wanted to make sure that we, you know, share with the public as soon as we received it and get any feedback from the local residents. So I want to point out too that to be no action taken tonight. This is purely just a concept plan. We were approached unsolicited by these gentlemen here, and we just like to share it with the residents tonight. So with that, maybe Art and Victor, if you could, you know, just formally introduce yourselves, and then maybe we can just review the plan that you're proposing.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. My name's Art Corsini. You'll also be hearing from Vic Barr, who is our architect and planner this evening. My name is Art, as I said, Art Corsini. I'm a principal in Fieldstone Associates Limited Partnership, a Pennsylvania entity. Tonight, we are honored and excited to present to you our vision of an upscale apartment community. Fieldstone and its affiliated entities own and manage properties in both New Jersey and Pennsylvania, consisting of 4,384 rental apartments. Seventeen, those are in 17 communities, two self-storage facilities, and one in about 100,000 approximately square feet of commercial and retail space. As you can see from the map that's up on your screen, all of our properties can be visited on our website, apartments seldomseen.com. I welcome any of the board members or residents of Northampton to visit any of our properties, and they will see that all of our properties are impeccably maintained. Myself, I will be personally involved in every phase of bringing this project to fruition, including the design, obtaining permits and approvals, the construction, and the management. At Fieldstone, we are excited and very sensitive to listening and incorporating the vision of the municipality and their consultants into what will be the final product. We will also manage and maintain all of our properties with in-house staff of over 100 employees and use local subcontractors in larger projects such as snow removal and landscape maintenance contractors to do the larger jobs. Personally, I temporarily moved to New Jersey, I'm sorry, from from New Jersey to Pennsylvania in 1987 for business purposes. However, the temporary was short-lived, as I fell in love with Bucks County and have been a resident ever since. I currently live in Plumstead Township with my wife, and I've been involved with youth sports and charitable organizations in the community for many years. Three of our five adult children work in our business. I would now like to introduce you to Victor Barr, our architect and planner, and Vic will walk you through our concept plan and vision for the proposed project. Two examples of what we think would work for building architecture, and some interior photos of these upscale residences. Vic, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Mike on Vic? Vic, your mic isn't on.
I'll call him. Mike, I doesn't realize. You on, Vic?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Okay, now we can hear you. Go back to your first slide.
So maybe Art, we could just talk with the first slide here, just so the residents have the benefit of what property we're talking about. I believe this is about 10 acres of land that is currently owned by the township. And you can see at the bottom of the map there, the site plan is the senior center and also the library. And maybe, Bill, if you could highlight those two sections there, so people can see that. So that's the senior center there. Yeah, that's a little better. Okay, very good. Okay, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Go ahead, Vic, take over.
All right, I'm Vic Barr, president and CEO of VLBJR Architects and Planners. I have an architectural degree from Penn State University and a certificate of planning from the University of Florence in Italy. My firm specializes in private sector, multifamily, and mixed-use developments from Boston to Richmond, Virginia. I've been registered in 16 states, including Pennsylvania, and over my 40-year career, been involved in the planning and design of approximately a half a million residential units. The proposed development area we're discussing this evening is approximately 12 acres adjacent to the Second Street. Adjacent to the Second Street and Bustleton Avenue revitalization that's going on in here. This development is proposed as a mixed-use community of 180 rental residential units with 3,400 square feet of commercial retail space. With the new commercial and retail development already underway in this area, these residential units will accelerate the transformation into an pedestrian-friendly, walkable community. The proposed 180 high-end units are configured in six buildings with a centrally located clubhouse and sizable pool and patio area. Section 1 is planned as two 24-unit three-story buildings with orientation on an existing open wetland area in the rear and frontage behind a park located on a new road connecting the proposed roundabout at Second Street Pike in Bustleton to the town, to the existing township road. The second, section 2 is planned with two 24-unit three-story buildings and two 42-unit four-story buildings. Three-story buildings have a visual connection to additional wetland areas. The four-story buildings are oriented towards the open areas of the playing fields and the adjacent Richborough School. These two types of buildings allow for the design of a variety of unit designs and configurations in order to target the spectrum of the marketplace from young professionals to active movements. The centerpiece of our community is a 6,000-square-foot clubhouse and pool patio area, featuring an assortment of amenities which Art will later discuss. The three-story 24-unit buildings are designed as walk-up non-elevator buildings and designed with surface parking. It's pretty touchy. Four-story elevator building, which is 42 units in a building, have 10 private garages located in each one of the buildings, and also 1,700 square feet of commercial retail space for a total of 3,400 square feet for the entire project. Both building types are designed with a residential scale and character, the combination of materials and colors in order to create a community of interest with visual variety. Buildings as shown here have a gray and white palette, but could easily accommodate an earth-torn appearance in tans and browns, or even a more traditional appearance with brick accents and contrasting white. The units have been designed as one- and two-bedroom luxury units. These units range in size from 850 to 1,400 square feet. It mixes approximately 25% one-bedrooms and 75% two-bedrooms. All the two-bedroom units have two baths. All units are designed as open floor plans with maximizing the amount of natural light. Full height cabinets, pantry units, and accent lightings are featured in all the kitchens. Stainless steel appliances. All appliances are energy efficient. Wood tone flooring throughout all the living spaces. Spacious bedrooms. Direct access from the master bedroom to the master bath, and as you can see, the master bath has granite vanity tops and undermount sinks. Hopefully, this gave an informative overview of this proposed mixed-use community. Thank you for your attention, and I will now turn it back over to Art.
Thank you, Vic. Bill, can you, have you turned that over to me? Bear with me a second. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vic, for presenting our vision for the for the project. As Victor Barr described, our proposed mixed-use project will be very upscale and consist of three- and four-story buildings, some with elevators, and interior selections such as wood tone, custom kitchens, granite and quartz countertops, luxurious master bathrooms and bathrooms, bedrooms and baths. The slide you see up now is a clubhouse that we have recently built on one of our most recent projects called East Hampton Place West. This is the clubhouse that we proposed to build on the Northampton project. The clubhouse is a very important component of any successful apartment community is in the hub of the community. As you will see from the inside, there's a common gathering room. This room, which I'll show you several slides, is a room where residents can come and gather, have coffee, socialize. We even can hold private parties here for the residents. And the room is divided into several, several different areas, as you'll see from these slides that I scanned through. So you could either gather in groups or in certain areas, which I'll show you here. Well, this is the coffee bar. I'll show you that first. So we put out, it isn't shown on this slide, but on the counter, we put out coffee machines, and our residents can come in every day, have coffee, no charge to them. Three days a week, we put out bagels, donuts, buns, things like that, to get them to come into the clubhouse, enjoy it, all of that at no charge. They can socialize with each other and really enjoy this environment. As you'll see from this photo, this is another slide that shows you a different view of a gas fireplace that's in there. In the large windows you see to the right, look out onto our outdoor amenities, which I will be showing you in a few minutes. This is a little private area here in the back that I was talking about, where if you wanted to have an intimate conversation with some clients, or a business meeting, or perhaps you wanted to just socialize with somebody on an individual basis. Also included in this clubhouse is a game room. In this particular game room, we have a pool table, foosball, and shuffleboard. Looking at it from this direction, you'll also see there's a little mini countertop here in bar with with seats, and also there's an undercabinet refrigerator where residents can bring in refreshments, food, and have a good time in the game room. Here you can see our fitness center, which is a full-service fitness center with bikes, weights, treadmills, and they can work off all that food and drink that they spent in the game room. Now, this is our outdoor amenity, and let me just reduce this a little bit. So this is a resort-style pool that we've been putting in in every one of our communities. You'll see it has a large pool deck, has palm trees, has little waterfalls that come out of each one of the palm tree holders. Not shown in this photo, there's also a hot tub and spa. This definitely gets a lot of use during the summer months. Also included, as we don't allow grills out on the decks of any of our residential units, nor do we allow grills out on any of the lawn areas for the first-floor units, we have provided for our residents grilling, grilling stations here. There's four. I'll show you another view here, and then a patio with chairs and umbrellas where they can come out and dine dine during the good weather. This is another view of the grilling area, looking back towards the pool. Also including in this outdoor, many is a fire pit area where people can gather. They can smoke some cigars out here or cigarettes. As we are a non-smoking community, we don't do not allow any smoking within the within the residences. They have to go outside to smoke, or it's a violation of the lease. Also, this is the mailroom within the clubhouse where all the residents come to get their mail. And also with the increase in online shopping, in the most recent years, we have now added package rooms to the community centers. And actually, you're going back and retrofitting a lot of our older properties because of the high demand for packages. So what happens here is that delivery person comes in, and you'll see this little, I have my cursor on it keypad, delivery person will come in and put in a code, and one of these doors, depending on the size of the package, will pop open. The delivery person will then put the package into that locker. He will then send a text or an email to the resident. When the resident comes back to the clubhouse, he'll put in that code, and the door will pop open. Also, behind this door, which I didn't have any pictures to show you, but this is about a 10 by 15-foot area where we have oversized packages, and there's just shelving in there, and the delivery people can put the packages on the shelves, and then when a resident comes back, he could just look for it and look for his name on it. This is our, we're a pet-friendly community with dogs and cats. We do have breed restrictions and weight restrictions, but this is our dog park area that we've now been putting into all of our communities. You can see we even have a fire hydrant there for the dog's use. We also have two areas here that's hard to see from this photo, but it's divided by a fence. So as this area starts to get used a lot, we lock this gate, and then they use the other one to allow this section to rejuvenate. So as you can see, the clubhouse is a very integral, integral component of this and very important to us as landlords and also to our residents. Also incorporated into the clubhouse is the leasing office and the maintenance office, and a fully furnished model residence is attached to the back of the clubhouse. This can be viewed by all our prospective residents without having to leave the clubhouse. All prospective tenants must meet certain income standards and must pass our credit and criminal background check requirements to live in our community. We find this to be very important and helps in keeping the community safe. We anticipate the rent ranges for these high-end residences to be for the one-bedroom, one-baths, $1,700 to $1,850 per month, and a two-bedroom, two-bath, $1,950 to $2,250 per month. As explained by Vic Barr, these luxurious residences have a variety of floor plans, some with private garages, others with elevator service, and this will attract a resident demographic of young professionals and older people whose families have left the nest and are looking to downsize and don't want the maintenance responsibilities of owning a home. Our experience shows these residents have high disposable incomes and typically support restaurants and retail businesses in the local community. With respect to school-aged children, this type of product attracts very few school-aged children and families, and for the following reasons. First, the building type and floor plan designs will only be one- and two-bedrooms. There will be no three-bedroom units in this community. Also, the nature of the buildings themselves as walk-ups and the four-story elevators with interior hallways are not conducive for families with school-aged children. In addition, the clubhouse amenities, as you saw from the slides, that we provide are not designed for kids to play in. Secondly, a family with school-aged children will most likely be able to find housing which is suitable to raising a family for a cost far less than what it's going to cost to live in our apartments. For example, they could probably find a starter home or a new town home with a private backyard or a garage to store their bicycles and toys for the kids and not pay any more money than they're going to pay here. In closing, we feel the upscale rental community we're proposing will be beneficial to the township and its residents, and is much needed to help create a downtown feel in Richborough. The community will be pedestrian-friendly with easy walking and biking access to local shopping and restaurant locations, and all project improvements will be private and maintained by the landlord at our sole cost and expense, including but not limited to roadways, parking lots, stormwater management systems, snow plowing, landscaping, and street lighting. Thank you for letting us describe this very exciting mixed-use community, and Vic and I would be happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Vic, Art, thank you very much. As I mentioned before, this is really the first public meeting, just discussing the concept here. There are no decisions or no actions being taken tonight. We just wanted to have the residents have the benefit of seeing this type of proposal. We do realize that, you know, this would be a first of its kind for something like Northampton. Other county townships do have communities like that, but, you know, we're looking for feedback from our residents and to see whether it's a good fit for us or not. So that's just a very brief presentation, and Art, Victor, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us present.
Adam, if all the board members want to comment or?
I do have a couple.
I, I do have a couple of questions, if I may.
Go ahead, Frank.
The, you know, I've gone out and I've looked at other developments and there seems to be something that attracts the apartments. For instance, a rail, a railroad station that makes it easier to get to employment or other things. Or, you know, and I saw up in, up near Doylestown, I saw an apartment complex. And even though there was a railroad station there, the draw was that the apartments were a place outside of Doylestown that people were moving into who worked in Doylestown. My question is, when you're looking at this development here, what is the draw that you see for Northampton?
Mr. O'Donnell, what, what I see in your, your township is there's, there's definitely a very much a need for this type of product. As, as you know, there's nothing like this in your community. And I think this, I don't think we'll have any problem absorbing this project probably. And I would think we'd have to be fully rented out here in a year to 18 months, once it, once it's constructed. The draw will be, I mean, you're close to, you have your business district. You can bike to it. You can walk to it. You're in a very desirable area. You're not that far from mass transit down in Warminster, so it's not that far. And today, the younger people are going to take Ubers. The older folks are not going to necessarily need mass transit. So we, we have a property with mass transit that we have built down in Haddon Township, New Jersey. And it's 252 units. And we can walk directly across the street from the project to the Patco High Speed Line and be in Philadelphia and at the market in eighth in 12 minutes. And only 20% of the population there uses, uses the Patco and goes into Philadelphia. So it's, you're going to attract the, like I said in my presentation, you're going to attract mostly here, young professional people. And then, and the other thing, you're going to, a lot of what we call empty nesters of people looking with that their families have moved out of the nest. And I think it's a great location for this type of product.
Okay, thank you for that. My second question is, as I look at your concept plan, I'm trying to figure out where you would be putting either a retention or detention basin that would support this facility, because it looks to me from where you are that the, you would be in the watershed for Ironworth Creek, which is also, which at this point is pretty much of a stressed watershed. So I'm just wondering where your detention and retention basins would be based on this?
Oh, we, we haven't worked that out yet as this is a concept plan, but we probably, we're probably anticipating that most of the detention is going to be underground with, which is not, it's expensive, but it's going to be underground in the parking lots. We've done this on other projects. You probably, you're going to, you might have some, a few open basins here. But as you can see from the wetlands, there's not much space here to put, put detention basins in. So we're anticipating, and obviously when we have to fully engineer this, we were anticipating a lot of it's going to be underneath the parking lots.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I asked.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Eileen, any questions? Any comment? None? Tim?
I'm good.
Okay, thanks. This is Adam. Thank you for, for the presentation. It, it looks like your, your, your community is really nice. I appreciate that. This is the first time I'm kind of getting to see it too, so I probably have a lot of questions as, as time goes on. I think the supervisors themselves will probably have a lot of discussion. And this is something new and different in our community, and we look forward to seeing how this plays out. So thank you for that.
I see.
I see Joe Johnston as a hand raised here.
Pardon?
Looks like Mr. Johnson has a hand raised.
Well, public comment is over.
Okay.
If, if, Joe, if you want to make some comments at the end, we'll, we'll do some comments at the end. Feel free to do that.
Well, thank you, Adam. And as I said in, in our presentation, we're open to, you know, we, this is our vision. The town may have another vision as to architecture. We're very flexible. We like, you know, and all the municipalities we work in, we like to work with the board, the boards, the consultants, and come up with a plan or a concept that'll then become, you know, come to fruition. And that'll make everybody, and look, you can't make every person happy, but make the majority of people happy. So that's the type of company we are, and we've been successful with that for many years now. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Clear the deck for a second here, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item. While we do that, I'll just remind everyone, if you would like to make a comment during public comment at the end of the meeting, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org and put your name and address in the, in the, I'm sorry, in the body of the email. And we'll recognize you and turn your microphone on then. Or you may write up to 300 words and I'll be happy to read your comment into the record. Please, if you would like to speak, indicate in your email that you would like to speak. That would be important for us, so we know to turn your microphone on.
We lost Mrs. Silver.
We lost Mrs. Silver. I think I got her back. Let's see. There she is. Now, you're on mute, Eileen, but that's okay. I think we're good. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, Amendment to Stipulation Settlement Agreement for the Expansion of the Old Richborough Schoolhouse. Barry?
Sure. Thanks, Adam. Is Heath Dumack on the line, Bill, or?
He is. He's becoming a panelist now.
Okay, very good. So for everyone's benefit, the old schoolhouse obviously sat dormant for many, many years in downtown Richborough. And I guess about seven years ago, this board acted upon selling it to the redevelopment authority. And Mr. Dumack purchased the property in pretty much as his condition and then had the property redeveloped and now currently has his offices in there and plus also rents it to others. That action, when we sold it through the redevelopment authority, was done through a court order. So Mr. Dumack is coming back to us tonight, proposing some additions to the building. In order to process these additions and approve it, it has to done through a legal process called amended stipulation. So maybe all I can do is I can let Mr. Dumack just review what he's proposing, and then we can go through some of the things we need to consider on the plan. So Mr. Dumack, if you could just show us the concept of what you're thinking of?
Certainly. Now, I apologize. I'm not, oh, there we go. Mr. Wertz presenting the revised rendering. We have done extensive meetings and conversations with the neighbors. To that end, and I apologize, I don't recall the neighbor, neighbor's last names, but I know them as Frank and Murray. The site itself, as the synopsis, is just over two acres in size. The existing stone schoolhouse is approximately 8,000 square feet in size. There are 67 parking spaces in front of the building. There is acts, there are access and parking easements across this property as well as the TD Bank and the small strip mall in front of us that has several shops, including UVA, if you're familiar with it. The property itself is landlocked, meaning that we do not have any frontage on Second Street Pike or Arms House Road. We settled on the property December of 2014 and moved in, I believe, December or January of, January of 16. The site is, as I said, two acres. There's an existing detention basin to the south of the property, which in our rendering is highlighted in blue. We are proposing roughly 27,000 square foot of addition, which would consist of a basement or lower level, a first floor level, and a second floor addition as well. The site, as I believe most of you are familiar with, had a raised or elevated pad site built. So the schoolhouse sits prominently and can be seen from Second Street Pike. We are using that to our advantage in the design of the proposed addition by, in essence, having a walkout for the basement level. So from the street or from the parking areas, it would appear to be a one and a half or two-story building. From the rear of the site, it would include the basement walkout. In meetings with the neighbors, they expressed concern about the existing vegetation, which I agreed with the neighbors. Currently, as part of the court stipulation, the maintenance of that basin is actually deferred to TD Bank and the strip mall, the, the UVA strip mall in front of us. As part of this revision to the court step, we would be willing to take on the maintenance responsibilities for the basin and all the buffer landscaping between us and the neighbors. If you zoom in towards the rear property lines, you can see the, the differing colored trees and plants. Those are the plantings that we were proposing above and beyond the original landscaping design for the site to better buffer the neighbors behind us from the lights and noise of our office building. No lights was a requirement of, and I apologize, Frank, one of the rear neighbors. And we agreed to that on the rear of the building. Basically, the, we had, before we actually moved into the office, we had a air conditioner compressor stolen while we were in construction. We have LED building lights and wall packs on all four walls of the exterior of the building. Once we got infrared cameras installed about two years ago, we're comfortable shutting down the lights that are currently there that, that light up the back of the building with the idea that for the addition, aside from egress doors, we would not have any upfiring or downfiring building lights on that side. That's pretty much all she wrote. I would be more than willing, welcome, and able to have, to, to answer questions with respect to what we're looking to do.
Barry, why don't you proceed? You're on mute.
Zoom.
Then we can have the board members ask questions.
Sure. I just want to emphasize the fact that this is, normally this would go through land development, which would include going to the zoning hearing board, for any type of variances, or going to the planning commissioner, both. Since this is done by a court order and it's amended stipulation, this board will take action, you know, on a number of variances and things like that, exceptions to it. So I was just going to review those quickly, Adam, for everybody's benefit. And then if you want to do board comment, you can do that. Just one, you know, so these things typically would come to the zoning hearing board for approval, but because of this court order becoming to this board, the first items are rear yard setback of 37.77 feet is proposed when the required setback is 50 feet. This is due to the location of the existing building and the proposed design to maintain the promise of the current schoolhouse. Also, they're seeking a waiver for not to require a loading space for the building, which would be typically required. Mr. Dumack also mentioned that the number of parkings typically would be calculated 161 spaces, but we're allowing 67 spaces to the site. Also, the, the, you know, another important aspect was the no retail uses are permitted at this site. So this building would be only used for office use. And then the, as indicated by some of the neighbors, due to the location of the building backing up the residential properties, no signage will be allowed on, on the back of the building, nor will be any lights in the back of the building. All the signs will be in front of the building. And I, I guess the other item is that additional buffering plantings will be added in the rear of the site. And I believe the township engineer would be responsible for ensuring that, you know, the buffering that's added to the back of the building would be adequate to meet the needs of the local residents there. Because we mentioned about the pine trees, making sure that they're taken care of. The other trees, making sure they mature and also extend, extend some of the planting back there for the Murray property.
That is correct.
Yeah. So you want to do a board comment, Adam, and then I can read the motion afterwards?
Well, we'll do board comment, you know, make motion second, and then we'll do comment as they go.
Okay. So you want me to make the motion?
Yeah.
Please. Okay. I move for approval of the amended stipulation between Northampton Township and Old Richborough LLC successor to interest TD Bank to allow for the expansion of the old schoolhouse at 1038 Second Street Pike in accordance with the terms contained within said stipulation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can do some comment. Barry, anything additional you'd like to add?
Well, the only thing I would like to add, I think Mr. Dumack should be commended in the sense that that schoolhouse, I mean, that was one of the first buildings I saw when I moved to Northampton back in 1993 and sat vacant. And I was very pleased in 19, 2014, that Mr. Dumack purchased the building and completely renovated the building and also maintained the, the existing facade. And I thought he did a beautiful job doing that. And, and he's been, you know, a very good member of our local business community, and I certainly would support this initiative.
Thanks, Barry. Eileen?
Yes, I also am very pleased that Mr. Dumack ended up with the building. When we walked in there the first time and you couldn't, you could fall right into the basement. I didn't know how he was ever going to make it look, but it is a beautiful inside of the building. Thank you, Mr. Dumack. Just some questions that I have is, first of all, for safety reasons, and maybe our resident fire chief may be able to, you know, give me the answer, not you, but isn't it for safety reasons that you would want some kind of lighting in the back, maybe motion lights that only when there's things? I mean, because I just can't, it gets dark back there. And, you know, I, I can't imagine not having any lights, maybe like I said, motion lights in just in case there is an emergency or something. I mean, Adam, don't, would you agree with that for safety purposes?
Well, I think Mr. Dumack pointed out that there is going to have to be some lighting at the, at the exits there for emergency exits. It's, it's, it's minor. I don't think it's glaring to the,
Right.
You do have to have that. And then the rest is really, you know, a choice about how much security you're willing to, to do. It sounds like the thermal infrared cameras are satisfying Mr. Dumack's desire for security back there. So I think that would, that's okay.
Okay. Okay. And also, Mr. Dumack, do you use the signage on Second Street Pike?
Yes, one of my tenants does.
Okay. And being that you are having this addition, you are besides extending your own business, you're looking to have other businesses come in.
That is correct.
And part of your leases and stuff will be that they would have signage also on Second Street Pike?
Actually, no.
Okay.
The signage that we're proposing, which is on, I believe the plans that were submitted are strictly on our property. At the, there are, there will be three different entrances into this building. Each entrance will have its own monument signage. But I'm not asking for or proposing anything additional on Second Street Pike.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, that's all I wanted to say. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you.
Kim?
Yes, one of my questions is because some of the residents have talked to me about sound. Are you going to be adding more, bigger air conditioning units?
We will be adding additional air conditioning units, yes. But the intent, I actually want to take the four compressors that are out in the rear of the building and elevate them with some kind of mancered to shield them from sight from the residences in the rear. I'm not sure exactly how that will look architecturally, but the intent is to get them off the ground, which also will lessen the impact or need for the lighting in the rear.
How about the sound? Will that help the sound?
Yes, the, by putting a mancered of sorts up to block the sight of the compressors from the neighbors, it will also help to buffer and shield from sound.
All right, and my other question is this. I know the residents have asked about extra landscape. Now, I just want to make sure that this happens, that it's not just talk. Because we've had people come in here and they talk the talk and then it never happens. So I want to make sure, I don't know if we could add to the stipulation or what, I think Bob has said that it has to go through our township, but I just want to make sure our residents are happy, the ones that you promised.
Well, I can, I can first off say that when I say I'm going to do something, I do it. I'm very active in the Boy Scout arena here in Bucks County, and a scout is trustworthy. So I do plan on putting those, the plantings, the trees, the shrubs in. What the suggestion was at the meeting that we had with the neighbors last week was that I plant, we don't have a set time or date that we want to build the addition. But in order to help the neighbors out, we're willing to plant the buffer plantings prior, substantially prior to that, whether it's this fall or next spring. We plan on doing it as soon, quite honestly, as soon as we get approval on the layout from your township engineer. We plan on doing that work.
Mr. Dumeck, would it make sense to have this in your site plan, documenting where you're going to put the plantings? In that way, we have it recorded?
Yes, sir.
Amanda, would that work for you and Kim, that we document exactly? I know, I just had the gentleman's first names, Murray and Frank, but we could document their properties and where additional plantings we may maintain or add it, things like that.
Absolutely, yeah, and once Mr. Dumeck submits the formal submission of the whole plan set, we can certainly go back through that with the two residents again.
Sure, and then also put a note about the pine trees, saying that they would be maintained or replaced?
Go ahead, Bob. Bob has a question.
No, not a question, a comment. I just want everyone to understand the process here, because this is a stipulation settlement agreement amendment, Mr. Dumeck still must file formal land development plans. Ordinarily, they would be reviewed by our engineers, planners, county planning commission, et cetera. That all will still happen. But the, the step that is not going to happen, that usually happens in a typical land development, is a trip to the planning commission and then a trip back to the board. So it's going to be incumbent on, on my staff and our professionals to make sure that in those land development plans and before, before we issue any permits, that the, the items that, that have been requested and the items that are required by our ordinances are indeed included on the plan and indeed installed per the plan. So I just want to make clear, that is the process, and we will make sure that, that that is, is certainly implemented as requested.
Thanks, Bob. Frank, you have any comments?
Yeah. Mr. Dumeck, first of all, I do agree with some of the comments of our, some of the earlier comments made by some of the supervisors about what you've done with the building. I've been in it. I, I think you've done very remarkable things with it. And, you know, when I had the opportunity to walk around the building and talk to you about your, the plans for development that you want to do. I, I just have two questions. One is, you know, and I know it's kind of a buggy boo with me, but I always worry about Ironworth Creek. And I'm just wondering, since there's going to be, there's going to be more impervious surface because of the building, will it require any changes to, to that basin to accommodate that? And I know that our engineer will look at that, but I just thought I'd raise it now.
Yes, the original court stipulation, the, the design plans that were done by Bowler back somewhere, I believe fifteen years ago, have an outfall structure, and I believe an orifice, that's approximately twelve or fifteen inches in diameter. What we're proposing is to throttle that back. So we're going to be putting a smaller orifice plate on it. And that will help mitigate the excessive flows going into the drainage feature behind us. That was actually one of the comments of the neighbors meeting that we had about a week and a half ago. No, last week, I'm sorry. And while I can't help flooding issues per se, I can guarantee that our work here, what we're proposing, will not negatively impact anyone down or upstream from us.
Okay, thank you. And the, the other piece, I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious. Give me, I mean, given the times we're in right now, and I see more people working from home and things like that, how do you propose to develop your property and how do you propose to get people in as tenants? I mean, it would seem to be a little tough in this environment.
You're correct. I don't plan on building in the next twelve to twenty-four months. From my own internal perspective, we are in the process of implementing UV lighting within the building, both to help sanitize the common areas as well as to install them into the HVAC system along with more efficient filters. I believe currently the CDC is recommending HEPA filters in the HVAC units. So as normal or new normal starts to progress, the intent is that we will attempt to integrate newer technologies into the building to help keep it state of the art as far as sanitization. And we'll see where we are in two years.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
I just had a couple of quick comments. Amanda said that, you know, we'll make sure that the plantings, as requested by the residents, get onto the plan. And I really want to push that when you get it onto the plan, that you meet with Murray and Frank again, show them what's there, make sure they're okay. I know you will do that. And I also want to say thank you because I appreciate that you're going to do the plantings well in advance of the potential construction, and that will give those plantings time to get seeded and to grow and provide better protection. I think that's, that's a good neighbor. So I think that's, that's good stuff.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else, so if there's no other comments, I'm gonna, oh.
Adam?
Biso.
Just so that I'm clear, because the, based on this conversation, the stipulation will need a little tweaking before it's executed. But there was some comment that I heard, at least I thought I heard Mr. Dumeck saying regarding a change in the responsibilities or him assuming responsibility or maintaining certain aspects of plantings and, and open space out there that's currently being taken care of either by the township or by, or by neighbors. Is that correct, Heath?
Yes, right now, the original court step plans had the basin and associated drainage swale maintained by the, what was Commerce Bank, now TD Bank, and the owner of the UVA strip mall. And that was very difficult to deal with, trying to get the two entities to agree to send someone out to brush hog. So we've been doing it ourselves twice a year and just doing it. With the improvements that we're looking to make, the additional landscaping, I personally would like to see that maintained with the weekly mowings to keep everything nice and clean.
And I'm assuming since that's not something that's been contemplated in what the board's seen so far, that that's consistent with what the board would want to see happen as part of this stipulation?
I think so.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll include that into the stipulation as well, and we'll reassign the responsibility for the maintenance of that basin and associated facilities over to Old Richborough School LLC.
Yes.
Okay. And then, other than that, as I, as I mentioned to the board during our agenda meeting, there, the, the most recent version of the stipulation, unfortunately, I didn't see until the packets went out. So there are a few, a few lawyer tweaks that need to be made to the document, but nothing that's otherwise inconsistent with what's been proposed or inconsistent with what's been discussed this evening.
Thanks, so. Prevent us from taking action today.
I'm sorry, Adam?
I said those tweaks are nothing that would prevent us from taking action.
No, no, not, not at all. That's, that was my point. It wouldn't change the, the, the form or substance of this document at all.
Okay, Eileen?
We, we heard from two of the neighbors in the back, and we didn't hear from, I think it's Harry and Teresa Murray. Have you spoken to them as well, Heath?
I'm not sure, and I apologize, I'm not sure. I'm, if it's the gentleman that's closest to the corner that, the zoning relief, he was at, he was at the same meeting as well, very nice gentleman.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because we didn't hear from him, and I wanted to make sure that you had spoken to him as well. Okay.
I've spoken to Mr. Murray, and he was fine. Okay.
Great.
Eileen, too, I just want to make, make a point that Mike Solomon's office did send out letters to all the residents within five hundred feet of the property. So that was, that notice was given out to all the residents within five hundred feet. I should mention that.
That's correct.
Okay, any other comment? If not, I'll call vote, all in favor and debate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Dumeck.
Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate your help on this. Take care, have a good night.
All right, thank you. Next up, consider a resolution condemning a portion of the, in quotes, connector road between Alms House Road and Second Street Pike. Eileen?
As part of the Richborough Master Plan, the access road or connector road between Alms House Road and Second Street Pike was intended to improve traffic flow in and around the village of Richborough. With the final portion constructed, it has become a significant alternative for motorists traveling southbound on Second Street Pike or westbound on Alms House Road. In order to make sure that this important component of our road infrastructure remains open to the public, we would like to condemn the portion of the access connector road bordering Addisville Commons Shopping Center, which runs from Ohed Shalom to Second Street Pike. This road was part of the Addisville Commons Land Development Project. This is a friendly condemnation, with Addisville agreeing to this resolution to make the portion they constructed open, passable, and accessible to motor vehicles and pedestrian traffic as a public township roadway. The township will assume maintenance responsibilities. May I read the resolution?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R twenty dash twenty-one condemning a portion of the tax map thirty-one dash nine dash two dash eight for use as a public street.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment, Eileen?
No, I, I just am glad that we're doing this, and even if the word is condemnation and that is, it has a negative ring to it, all parties have agreed when Mr. Dreher was doing Addisville Common, he, we always talked to him about that part of the road becoming a public roadway. And I didn't know whether to know access road, connector road. I'm looking forward to when we name it. That's it.
Thanks. Frank, I think you were the second. Any comments?
I have no further comments on it.
Thanks. Kim?
No, I'm good.
Barry?
I'm good.
Now, just my only comment is to reiterate what Eileen said. This is an all parties agreed to situation. This is, this is a friendly condemnation, if you will. So thanks for that. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a, consider a resolution authorizing an application to the Penn Dot Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant Program to construct a roundabout at Second Street Pike. Eileen again.
I'm off. Okay, we will be obtaining a Penn Dot Highway occupancy permit to extend Township Road and construct a roundabout at Second Street Pike and Bustleton Pike. We have completed the design phase to Penn Dot, and we have the opportunity to apply for a Department of Community and Economic Development Grant, a DCED grant for its construction. The Township Road Extension and Roundabout Project were conceived during the process of developing a master plan for Richborough. Our traffic engineers determined that this improvement would relieve congestion on Second Street Pike and its intersection with Alms House Road as well as generally improving traffic flow, flow throughout the village. The estimated cost for total construction will be three point five million dollars. The application for the DCED Multi-Modal Grant Program would request three million dollars, which is the maximum allowable grant. There is not any matching fund requirement. DCED has waived matching funds because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We are required to authorize the township manager to file this application for the grant by resolution. May I read the resolution?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R dash twenty dash twenty-two authorizing the township manager to file an application with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a DCED Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant in the amount of three million dollars to construct, to construct an extension of Township Road and a roundabout at Bustleton Pike and Second Street Pike.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, motion is second. Any discussion? Start with Eileen again.
I am very happy that DCED has put out some more grants, because we had been waiting. We had sort of told our residents that we were waiting to get some money in order to do it, that we really couldn't afford to just go out and build this roundabout. I know some people are not happy about this, but I would like you to, don't think of it as an old New Jersey circle. It is something new. It is something that Penn Dot looks at and says it is, it is traffic calming. And take a ride up to Bridgetown Pike, and you will see one that is being used and has really helped the traffic flow in that area. That's it.
Thanks. Who was second? Kim, thank you.
I say anything where there is no matching fund requirement, let's hope it goes through. That's all I have.
Right?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that this roundabout was approved by a board before I actually became on this board, and I understand it was supported by Penn Dot. So I would simply defer to the prior board's decision. I have no comments beyond that.
No comment for me, otherwise I'm, I'm, other than I'd like to see that the, um, that the money is coming to Northampton Township. I think, uh, anytime we can get a grant to do our work, that's, that's a great spot. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Eileen. Uh, next up, uh, bids for salt. Frank?
Okay, on behalf of the Bucks County Consortium, Doylestown Borough advertised for bids for rock salt in the intelligence chair on July thirty-first and August fifth, twenty twenty. Do- Doylestown provided Northampton with the proof of publication and bid tabulation sheets. I recommend a contract be awarded to Morton Salt Inc. Chicago at their bid price of forty-seven seventy-five per ton delivered. Norton was the lowest of the four bidders identified on that bid tabulation sheet. We're currently paying forty-eight fifty per ton and used approximately thirteen hundred tons last year. Due to good planning, our salt usage figure was low for this past winter season. Also good for, you know, not as good planning, I give you credit for, Bob, but also it was lack of snow that helped the bid.
It certainly did.
Our salt shed was filled to capacity, saving the township a considerable amount of money. Morton Salt Incorporated was our provider, uh, in the last salt contract. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we award a contract for rock salt to Morton Salt Inc., Chicago, Illinois, at the bid price of forty-seven seventy-five per ton delivered to the Northampton Township, uh, Salt Shed, one fifty Lewis Drive, Ivyland, PA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Frank, any other comment?
No, no further comment.
Eileen?
Um, just keep getting Frank to do this and maybe we won't ever have snow again. But, uh, yeah, I just think it's funny when it says Morton Salt. I don't know. I expect somebody to come out with a little sh- salt shaker and fill up our salt bins.
Well, if we need more, we'll get the salt shaker from you, Eileen.
Okay.
Uh, Kim? Barry?
That one looked good.
Uh, no comment from me either. Uh, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Last, we have, uh, a report on our twenty twenty-one minimal, minimum municipal obligation for police and non-uniform employee pension plans. Kim?
Yes, first I want to tell you that, um, we don't need to vote on this, um, to what we need is, uh, just, we just have to do the report and have it included in the minutes for auditing purposes. So I'm just going to read the report. The administration is required by law to submit a report to the Board of Supervisors on the minimum municipal obligation for each of the employee pension plans by September thirtieth each year for the following fiscal year. The MMO represents the funding level required by the township to maintain the actuarial soundness of each plan. The Township Actuary calculated the required contribution amounts for the twenty twenty-one plan year. And these amounts must be budgeted as expenditures in the twenty twenty-one budget. The MMO for each plan in twenty twenty-one are as follows. Police Pension Plan, one million ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Non-uniform Employees Plan, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Money Purchase Pension Plan, one hundred and five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. And it adds up to two million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. The total MMO for twenty twenty-one is an increase of a hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars from the previous year. The MMO increased in two thousand and nineteen by two hundred and seventy-four thousand and eighty-nine dollars and by thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars in two thousand and eighteen. It decreased in two thousand and seventeen by forty thousand and decreased by sixty-eight thousand in two thousand and sixteen. The increase is attributed in part to the value of the planned assets on January first each year. Unfortunately, the market drop in December two thousand and nineteen and planned assets were at a low point on January first. Since the time, the market has recovered nicely and the value of planned assets has significantly, significantly increased. The township implemented a defined contribution pension plan or a money purchase plan for new hires in two thousand and sixteen. And the above MMO for that plan is an estimated contribution to the plan rather than a required contribution. The township contributes five percent of the base wages for each planned participant. And employees also contribute five percent as a match to the township contribution. The township expects to receive approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand in municipal pension system state aid that will reduce the required contributions. The balance of one million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars will be budgeted in the general fund. And like I said, there, there is no need for a vote for this. We just need to have it on the books.
That's great. Thank you, Kim. Uh, moving on, before we do, uh, our reports again, uh, if anybody would like to make public comment, please email at Uh, put your, uh, name and address in the body of the email. If you would like to speak, please indicate that. If you would just like to type a comment, I'm happy to read it into the record, just, uh, please, uh, under three hundred words. Uh, there will be public comment, um, at the end of the meeting. So with that, uh, we'll start out with, uh, the other reports and Kim.
Okay, the senior center. Tomorrow, the center will be hosting a free outdoor flu shot clinic sponsored by Walmart from ten o'clock in the morning till two o'clock in the afternoon. The shots are available for anyone fifty-five or better. Since the event is tomorrow and there is not enough time to make an appointment, walk-ins will be accommodated. Just remember to take your ID, insurance card, and mask. You will be requested to wear a mask the entire time you're there. And I also, uh, just want to remind everybody to please get your sweet shots. It's that time of year. Um, now for Parks and Rec. Uh, first I want to report that the new lights on the civic center are operational and in full use. The bas- the baseball and football organizations are thrilled to be able to have these fields lighted so they can play games and practice in the early evenings. It's been a long time coming and I know they're extremely grateful. The contractor is working to install the lights on the basin so soccer can have the light to season as well. The Director of Parks and Rec, uh, Nancy O'Pakke is thrilled because the switches to turn the lights on and off will be able to be done remotely. The days, uh, the days and nights of being left on for hours will soon be behind us. The Parks and Rec Fall brochure has been mailed out and the staff is excited to offer a select menu of in-person programs in addition to new and exciting virtual programs in order to suit one person's comfort level. Uh, many classes are starting this week, but next week, if you need to register and the classes have already started, fees will be prorated. Um, if you choose in-person program, there are new procedures to follow. To prevent the spread of the virus and for the health and safety of all our participants, a plan has been put in place in accordance with the CDC, state, and local guidelines. The protocols are outlined in the brochure. Remember that all programs are listed on the Parks and Rec website, www.NorthamptonRec.com. Uh, but lastly, October is next week. Um, and I'm happy to report that Halloween will be here, will happen here in Northampton Township. Due to COVID, our traditional Halloween event will be reinvented outside this year in the municipal park on Saturday, October thirty-first, which falls on Halloween with a full moon. It will be an epic one for pets if one so desires. The day will also include a scarecrow run contest and trunk vehicle display event where the parade contestants get to vote on their favorite trunks. The supervisors will serve as judges at the parade. However, selecting costume winner, winners will be a little more difficult as the categories have changed. We're also asking households and businesses to participate and help decorate the park with their scarecrows. We're looking forward to offering these events to help the community come together during these crazy times and just have some fun. Um, pre-registration for all events is necessary and masks will be provided. There will be cash prizes and honorable mention awards for the winners in all three events during um, along with the trick-or-treat bags for the children who parade. I can't wait. Uh, of course, all the details are listed in the brochure and online at the Parks and Rec. That's all I have.
Kim? Frank?
I'm happy to announce that the Free Library of Northampton Township, uh, will be reopening somewhat on October first. Uh, mask will be required at all times in the building. Masks must be properly worn, fully covering both the mouth and the nose. If you are unable to wear a mask for any reason, staff will accommodate your needs while you wait outside the library. Hours are certainly listed on the Facebook, uh, page and on the webpage, but I'll just go over them now. Hours Monday through Thursday, seniors and high-risk patrons can go in between ten AM and twelve PM. General public and curbside pickup, and the curbside pickup is something that will continue with it. That's going on now, but that will also continue, uh, between one, uh, PM and seven PM. Uh, on Saturday, general public and curbside pickup will be one PM to five PM. There are going to be capacity limits that, uh, people will have to deal with. General browsing will only be ten, only ten individuals will be permitted into the library at one time for general browsing and limited to a maximum of thirty minutes each. Computer use will, that will allow fourteen individuals to use in, to into the library to use the computers and that'll be limited to sixty, sixty minutes each. This is going to make some of my neighbors in my area happy and I won't be hearing about the library not being opened anymore, I hope, but, uh, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Barry?
Uh, nothing for that.
Thank you, Eileen.
Yes, um, on Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, Council Rock will be beginning their hybrid schedules for some children to return to the classroom. There will still be a hundred percent virtual learning as well for those who do not wish to have in-school learning. Therefore, starting on Tuesday, there will be buses on the streets of Northampton and at different times than we are used to. Please be careful and courteous to our school bus drivers and children on these buses. For those parents using the buses to transport their children, please be understanding there will be many challenges. Good luck to all the staff and children on another new normal. Be safe. That's all, sir.
Thanks, Eileen. Uh, so I do have a few things tonight. Um, first, uh, sorry to report, uh, that the fire department open houses that we do during Fire Prevention Week, uh, will not happen this year. We have just way too many people, uh, that come into the firehouses, uh, hundreds of people at a time, which we're, we're sorry. Um, but for safety reasons, we're just, we're, we're going to postpone that, cancel this year to next year. However, please keep an eye on our Facebook page. We're still going to try to do some virtual fire prevention activities and you'll hear more about that as the next few weeks, uh, go on. Second, uh, there's going to be a road closure and detour on East Holland Road, uh, starting tomorrow, uh, the twenty-fourth of September between Lawrence and Belmont. Uh, so that will be impassable. There are detour signs up and that'll be for approximately one month while some development work is done there and the road has to be open. So please plan on that, uh, take a look at that and follow the signs, uh, if you can. Uh, I want to congratulate Officer Marty Common for being Selective Police Officer of the Year for twenty nineteen. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we normally do that at this, at the supervisors meeting or make some recognition, but, uh, during COVID, that was done as a ceremony at the police station. Um, but, um, congratulations, uh, to Marty. Way to go. Uh, he's been a police officer here for I don't know how long, but quite some time. I've known Marty and, uh, well deserved. So that's, that's super. Uh, also just to, uh, mention numerous other officers were recognized at the same time for some of their exceptional services that they've given to the community during that year as well. Uh, the Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad, uh, as many of you may or may not know, has three stations. Their main station is here on Township Road. They also have a station in Southampton and they also have a station in Feasterville. Station in Feasterville was razed and a new one was built, uh, that is now operational and, uh, that, uh, that station is much more state-of-the-art than the old station and that does service portions of Holland. So I thought I would, uh, make mention of that. Other than that, I don't have anything else and, uh, we'll move over to our manager's report.
Just a few quick items. Uh, thank you. Um, on the trash collection issue, we have seen a significant reduction in the number of missed, uh, collections in the last, um, I'll say three to four weeks. Um, to the point where now we are seeing, uh, almost pre-COVID calls, the number of calls coming in that were pre-COVID instead of, um, you know, in the last, uh, couple of months where it was, uh, the calls were pretty voluminous. Um, I think Mascaro has, um, done a much better job now in collections. Uh, I get emails every day from their, uh, general counsel about the number of trucks in the township and, um, how they're doing. Um, I also receive, um, information from our own staff here on the number of calls and I can say again that, uh, the call volume on missed collections is way down. Uh, they are not yet up to par, however, I think they still have some work to do on yard waste collection. Uh, again, they're, they're, um, that they're, um, they're trying to focus first on trash collection, then recycling, and then yard waste. Um, in the last four weeks, they have had the regular number of trash and recycling vehicles operating in the township every day and, but they have not had the required number of yard waste trucks. Um, they're down about one, sometimes two trucks, uh, a day on a collection day. Um, we hope to see that improve. Um, I would tell residents, if they do not pick up your yard waste on the regular day, please leave it out. They will get it either the day after or no later than the weekend following your collection day. And they have been working, uh, on weekends as well to try and get caught up, uh, particularly on yard waste collection. So I guess that's good news. Um, again, I would tell residents, if they do miss you, and they do sometimes, even pre-COVID, they used to miss call, uh, collections, give us a call at the main number. Uh, the folks on the front desk are charged with, um, letting Mascaro know that they've missed a a collection and they will be back to pick it up. Um, our paving program is underway. We're about fifty percent, uh, through the, uh, program. On or about September twenty-eighth, we'll start the last phase. That would start with milling roads. And then the, our own crew, uh, that's with a contractor that our own crew would follow, uh, with resurfacing. So in the next, uh, round, we have, uh, Harmony Sunset and Manor Drives and then they'll be moving to Holly Hill, Holyoke, Holly, Highspire, and Howard Ro- Howard Roads. And then last would be Hampton, Virginia, and Lamar Drive. So that would complete our program. I would think we would be complete, uh, sometime around the end of October. Um, the last thing I want to remind, uh, residents about is the census. September thirty is the last day to comply with the requirements to, uh, complete the census for uh, this, this, uh, census period, twenty twenty. Uh, the Census Bureau tells us right now that just about eighty-three and a half percent of our residents have responded, uh, but that other sixteen percent is very important. Um, responding to the census gives them an accurate count and it allows, uh, for um, literally millions of dollars, uh, to flow back into Pennsylvania and Bucks County and Northampton Township if we get an accurate count. So I want to urge everyone to, um, come, to re- So I want to urge everyone to, to report to the Census Bureau by the deadline. We'll have some information out on our website through our Facebook page and others to encourage everyone to fill out the census form. And just to give you an order of magnitude, the Census Bureau says that the 6,400 people that they have, that have not yet been counted in the community translates to approximately $13 million in, in, in state and federal resources that wouldn't be allocated to our community. So it's very important that everyone fill out a census form and be counted. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bob. I just want to make one point. I think with the trash, I mean, we were in a, we were in a real pickle.
Yes, we were.
And I think, I think Mascaro really did want to get that fixed up, but also the action that the board took last month, and especially Bob, Bill, and Joe really keeping up the heat on getting that fixed. I think all those things together really, really pushed this forward. I know it's not perfect, but it is a lot better, so thank you for that. Next, Solicitor's Report, Joe Pizzo.
I would like to report only that the board met an executive session three times since, since your last regular meeting, on Wednesday, September 9th, on Monday, September 21st, and again this evening, immediately prior to your regular board meeting. Present for those executive sessions in all three cases were all five members of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, the Assistant Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and me. Over the course of those three executive sessions, two matters of litigation were discussed as well as two matters involving township real estate. In no case was official action ever taken at any of those three executive sessions, and no official action was required as a result of those executive sessions for this evening. Other than that, for anyone who was celebrating the New Year earlier this week, a Happy New Year and another holiday coming up, Yom Kippur next week, so acknowledge that holiday as well.
Thank you, Joe. Engine News Report, Amanda.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Public Comment, and we do have one person that would like to speak. Bill, if you could turn on Joe Johnston? Let me know when you're on, Joe.
Hello?
Hi, okay. Hi, Joe. Thanks for your patience. Can I just have your name and address again for the record?
Certainly. Joe Johnston, 41, Grant Drive, Holland. So I wanted to comment earlier on the apartment concept plan, and, you know, the developer had mentioned that, you know, typically people that live there don't have children, but he didn't say there would be any restrictions against children. So I think that's a concern for the school district to address, and I'm sure that would happen if it ever went forward. Secondly, he said that the people who live there generally walk, ride a bike, Uber, take the train for transportation. So of course, you know, he fell short about saying anything about driving. So right away, I'm wondering, how many parking places does he, do these units typically come with? Two bedrooms come with two, two parking places? You know, the conceptual drawings didn't look like many parking places to me. And just so, if someone could refresh my memory, because I didn't quite get the number. How many rental units were going, was he proposing?
I don't remember.
Need to answer that?
Sure, Bob. Thanks.
180, Joe.
180, and so.
And our ordinance requires two spaces per unit.
Okay.
So he would have to comply with that requirement.
Okay.
I think there are some, I agree, the parking lots didn't look big enough, but there are, there are garage units with garages, too.
Right. So like I said, you know, he led me to that question by not talking about it. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, an item of concern. You know, in Mr. Moore's presentation, he said that the developer was brought in, you know, to explain what's going, what he wants to do and to get public feedback. So you had, I wanted to comment because of what I just explained. So how could I possibly come up with that question before the meeting starts? So here we are, it's, what, 9:15? The meeting's almost over. There was one speaker, which was me, okay? And I'm limited to three minutes under your rule, and I was ruled out of order. So it, you know, I guess a solicitor could comment if that meets the law, but the law doesn't always make common sense. And I don't understand, you, one public comment according to Mr. Moore, and then, but then you don't allow it. It's comical and troubling at the same time. Secondly, for the benefit of the public, there's a pre-meeting that happens before every supervisor's meeting, and it's limited to supervisors, but it's also a public meeting. And I've attended them periodically since 2012. And tonight, as usual, once the public portion of the meeting is completed, then it becomes private, where you're talking about money, contracts, as the solicitor reports on every meeting. But I said, I said that, you know, if the meeting turns back to non-private conversations, that I would like to be included, and the manager said that he didn't think that that was required. And so the solicitors listening, I wonder if you could comment on that?
Joe, I don't recall saying it wasn't required.
You weren't sure.
I didn't think it was going to be necessary. We, in other words, I didn't see any reason why the board had to go back into a public meeting following executive session, because we had nothing else to talk about.
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
Okay, perhaps I misunderstood, but then the question stands, if it does go back to, on, you know, non-private conversations, then whoever, if it was me or someone else, will be invited back into the meeting, is that correct?
That's correct. And we would have had you back, Joe.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Pellegrino did say that wasn't required. However, I understood what he meant as it wasn't going to be required because there was nothing else that we would be coming back on. There was.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't understand that. I just, the first time I heard that and didn't make sense to me, so I wanted to get that clarified.
I'll be clearer next time, Joe.
It's fine. I appreciate your explanation.
But it was also, it was also said by Mr. Selisker at the same time that if we did have anything to discuss post-executive session, that we would come back and you would be invited back in. In fact, you made a point of letting us know that you'd still be online.
I remember making the comments. I don't remember Mr. Selisker's comments, but I'll digress on that. Lastly, when will we be returning to these non-Zoom meetings and having public meetings for supervisors?
When it's safe. We're not.
Okay, so, well, you, are we doing anything to prepare to make it safe? We've seen by one of the previous speakers tonight what private industry is doing. They're installing HEPA filters, ultra-filter, ultraviolet lights, filters, you know, to kill bacteria in their HVAC system. You know, from my experience in construction, I can tell you a lot more expensive fix, what hospitals do is they, they don't recirculate air. They capture the heat or the cooling out of it. They dump it back in the atmosphere. They take that energy that they recapture, they use it to treat the fresh air coming in, okay? Are we doing anything like that to prepare for meetings, or are we just going to wait and sleep?
I'll make one comment, and Joe, I don't mind answering the question, and then Bob can talk about what the township's doing, but our biggest concern are crowds. We are not prepared, and I don't think anyone is prepared for an enormous amount of people to be in a small space. That really is the issue.
Right.
And it would be extremely difficult to decide who can come in, who's not going to come in, who gets to speak, who gets to, has to stay outside. So I think our best, our best avenue right now has been to have one way or the other, and we're not prepared to have big crowds, nor is anyone at that point, but I'll let Bob continue the conversation.
Well, I don't think, we can't go back to those type of public meetings yet because our room physically isn't large enough to even accommodate the board almost at the dais. You have to be six feet apart, so you're going to severely limit the number of people that could be in the room. You're going to severely limit the number of people, the chairs have to be six feet apart, and, I mean, for my purposes, if we even could put the board up there and distance them at six feet, the, me and the solicitor or the engineer would have to be in the room somewhere else. It's just not physically big enough, Joe, right now to do that. We've done a lot of things in the, all of our buildings to protect our staff, and that's been our primary focus right now, and that's the reason we are still not open to the public in these buildings. You see, we are opening the library with restrictions. We might be able to do something like that going forward, but I don't see until we get clear, clearer vision on this virus that we're going to be able to have people in our meeting room again. We can put all the HEPA filters in we want, but we're not going to be able to maintain the distancing requirements, and I just don't think it's going to be safe until we know for sure that, that this virus is, is going away.
Thanks, Bob.
I'll just close with, I, I, I think we need a plan and to come back. You got to start planning now. You see restaurants up to 50% capacity. Try and get, try and walk in without a reservation. You can't get one, okay? People are, are becoming accustomed to protecting themselves, and others are protecting themselves against others. It would, nobody would be forced to come to the meetings, okay? It would be voluntary. I've been in that room many times. You could probably fit, easily fit 25 people in there, which is more than probably double what normally shows up at a meeting. So unless it's like a really hot topic that's going to draw a crowd, I think the normal attendance at the meetings would, could be done safely with masks and, you know, with the distancing. So again, you know, I guess we can agree to disagree, but that's my opinion, and thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. We appreciate your comments. There are no other public comments tonight. Let me just last double check. Bill, is that correct? Okay, with no other comments, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.